Good evening, everybody. I hope everyone had a nice weekend. And for all those fathers and male role models, I hope you all had a wonderful Father's Day weekend. I do have 7:30 this evening on June 22nd, so I'd like to call this city council meeting to order. With that, would everybody please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance is to the Lord, in the name of His Jesus Christ, in the name of His Holy Father, and of His Son, and of His Holy Spirit. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The pledge completed. Would the clerk please call the roll?
McHale?
Here.
Bud Matts?
President.
O'Brien?
Here.
Beniziano's absent?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Here.
Reyes?
Here.
Sanoyka?
Here.
With six present and one absent, there is a forum this evening. Therefore, members of the audience and those attending in the other room are reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over our city's cable television channel as well as other media outlets. Jumping right into the agenda, I see that there are no previous council meeting minutes to approve as of now, no opportunity to deviate, nothing for the mayor's report. Are there any ward reports this evening? Okay, seeing none, then we'll go ahead and jump right into business. Just a quick heads up, we do have Bill Mitchell available for tonight's consent resolution. He does not wish to speak at this time, but if there are any questions regarding, let me pull up the item here, Resolution O. If there's any questions on that and anyone wishes to pull that, we can then make a motion to open the floor. But without the necessity to open the floor currently for public comment, we will just jump into the items pending. The first one is line item A. It's ordinance number 21-31, approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. In for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call roll?
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano's absent?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Moving on to line item B, ordinance number 21-32. It's to amend Chapter 102 taxation of the Code of Ordinances to provide for a new restaurant incentive. In for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Moving along to line item C, ordinance number 21-33. It's to amend Chapter 102 taxation of the Code of Ordinances in order to create a retail home rural sales tax incentive. In for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. I feel like I'm in one of those bidding wars here. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call roll?
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
No.
With five in favor and one opposed, the resolution is adopted. Moving on now, the next item on the agenda are the consent ordinances in for first reading. This consists of three items. Those are items F through H. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Okay, seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the ordinances, the three ordinances, in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Thank you, Alderman Bessesi for the second. Beginning with line item F, ordinance number 21-00 at this time, is to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Line item G, ordinance number 21-00, is to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Rolling Meadows to allow outdoor storage in the M1 and M2 zoning districts by modifying Table 5.13 in Section 122-331 of Division 5, Article 5, and Section 122-76 of Article 3, the City of Rolling Meadows petitioner. Line item H, ordinance number 21-00, is to approve a special use pursuant to Section 122-76 of the zoning ordinance to allow outdoor storage of company fleet vehicles for tenant and semi-trailers for property owner and variation from Section 122-163 of the zoning ordinances to reduce required parking from 28 parking spaces to 25 parking spaces, subject to conditions at 3835 Industrial Avenue. Spring Green is the tenant petitioner with permission of Lehman Peterson Corporation who's the property owner. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the ordinances will be moved forward for second reading. Now is the point where we add new business, and there is a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for June 22nd, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sanoyka?
Just a quick administrative item here. On the agenda, it shows that the business is Hickory Roosters, and I just wanted to confirm that it's the Hickory Roosters on Algonquin?
It is Hickory Roosters. We do have that officially confirmed. The letter that was supplied to us from Hickory Roosters spelled it as Hickory Roosters, and so for consistency's sake, it was left that way. Any further discussion?
Understood. Thank you. Nothing else?
Thank you. No further discussion. Seeing no further discussion, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item E. It's Resolution Number 21-R-52, and it's to award a contract for Julie for utility locating services to U.S. Infrastructure Company, also known as USIC. This, as we know, is postponed from the June 8th city council meeting. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Thank you, O'Brien. Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
With five in favor and one opposed, the resolution is adopted. Moving on now, the next item on the agenda are the consent ordinances in for first reading. This consists of three items. Those are items F through H. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Okay, seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the ordinances, the three ordinances, in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Thank you, Alderman Bessesi for the second. Beginning with line item F, ordinance number 21-00 at this time, is to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Line item G, ordinance number 21-00, is to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Rolling Meadows to allow outdoor storage in the M1 and M2 zoning districts by modifying Table 5.13 in Section 122-331 of Division 5, Article 5, and Section 122-76 of Article 3, the City of Rolling Meadows petitioner. Line item H, ordinance number 21-00, is to approve a special use pursuant to Section 122-76 of the zoning ordinance to allow outdoor storage of company fleet vehicles for tenant and semi-trailers for property owner and variation from Section 122-163 of the zoning ordinances to reduce required parking from 28 parking spaces to 25 parking spaces, subject to conditions at 3835 Industrial Avenue. Spring Green is the tenant petitioner with permission of Lehman Peterson Corporation who's the property owner. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the ordinances will be moved forward for second reading. Now is the point where we add new business, and there is a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for June 22nd, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Is there any discussion to approve the payment of bills on warrant for June 22nd? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. We now enter the consent resolutions, and this consists of eight items. Those are items J through Q. Does any alderman wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Alderman Sanoyka?
And Nancy.
Got it. Any other items by any other alderman? Okay, seeing no further items other than N, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the, what is that now, seven resolutions in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. This begins with line item J. It's Resolution Number 21-R-53. It's to award a contract for Phase 3 of the Public Works Parking Lot Improvement Project. Line item K, Resolution Number 21-R-54, is to approve a parking bay improvement agreement with the Meadow Edge Improvement Association. Line item L is Resolution Number 21-R-55, is to approve a parking bay improvement agreement with the Plum Tree Homes Association. Line item M is Resolution Number 21-R-56, is to award a contract for the fiscal year 2021 sanitary sewer and storm sewer rehabilitation pipelining. Line item O is Resolution Number 21-R-58, is to accept the inducement resolution regarding certain expenditures to be reimbursed from the special tax allocation issued, if any, in connection with the proposed project in the Gulf Road Conservation Redevelopment Project area. Line item P, Resolution Number 21-R-59, is to authorize exclusive agency agreement extension with Colliers International, Colliers Bennett &amp; Conweiler LLC, doing business as Colliers International, for the purpose of marketing and selling or leasing city property. Finally, line item Q, Resolution Number 21-R-60, is to amend the fiscal year 2021 budget transfer funds from general fund reserves to the refuse fund and the local roads fund. The question is, shall the seven resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. Circling back to line item N, Resolution Number 21-R-57, is to award a five-year contract for residential curbside recycling collection. Is there a motion? I guess I don't even need to call the motion to adopt this resolution, but...
So moved.
Thank you. The second. Now, discussion is yours. Alderman Sanoyka?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a clarification request from staff for the 86 a month surcharge fee to supply the recycling container with this contractor that we've had already. This is just an extension of the current contract that we have, so is there a new container that we expect from Flood Brothers?
No, not at this time. Once the city makes a decision to automate our process, we will be using, our plan is to use the containers currently owned by the residents, which are owned by the city, for refuse. And at that time, the contractor who picks up recycling will supply a brand-new recycling container based on their size need. That will likely happen in alignment with our outfitting of city vehicles with the automation necessary to do the collection using the Corrado cans, which, the automation system. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you for the clarification. No additional comments at this time.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Alderman Bud Matts?
So then, will they be furnished, those at no cost?
No, that would be the 86 cents. They are not going to charge the 86 cents per month fee until the containers are delivered. So that will not go into effect until we work that through the process, and obviously council be aware of that long before that happens.
Thank you.
Yes.
Further discussion, comments, questions? Seeing no further questions, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the resolution is adopted. This brings the council to other business and reports. As you can see, there are two appointments this evening. The first one is for the Vehicle Replacement Committee, and for this, it's a council liaison, and Alderman McHale has volunteered her ability to dedicate additional time in participating with that committee. So at this time, I'd ask for a motion to approve Alderman McHale's appointment.
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion on this appointment? Well, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, Alderman McHale, welcome to the Vehicle Replacement Committee.
Thank you.
Yep, and the next appointment is for the Economic Development Committee, and matter of fact, this is for Dominic, or Nick Martinelli. We actually, the city, we just entertained a ribbon cutting for his new business in Rolling Meadows, Robin Hood Roofing. He did participate at a previous Economic Development Committee meeting, from my understanding, and he became very intrigued, and he wanted to devote some time in helping to move the economic needle for our city, being a local entrepreneur. And so with that, we might as stop a local business owner from participating in our Economic Development Committee, and with that, I'd like a motion to approve this appointment.
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. Any discussion on Dominic Martinelli's appointment?
I'll just second that. He did attend our last ADC meeting, and great energy, obviously experienced being a local business owner, so looking forward to having him on the committee.
Good, thank you. With no further discussion, then I'll have the clerk call the roll, please.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, Nick Martinelli is now a member of the Economic Development Committee. I do not have any proclamations this evening. Is there anything for the city clerk to report?
I don't have any reports, but I just want to say that it's great to see everybody back in person.
Thank you.
I'm happy to be back also.
It's been missed. It's been missed. Trust me. All right, then that brings us to city staff reports, and the first item here is the community items of interest, and for this, Manager Crumstock, you can have the floor when you are ready.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. I do have one add-on to, that's not on the sheet, but we do want to, as we mentioned during the committee of the hall introducing Pete Sutter, we do want to congratulate Pete Sutter, being the next deputy chief in the fire department. He's already taken over his roles and responsibilities. He did start right after deputy chief Rick Acosta retired on Friday, June 18th. We also want to thank everybody who attended the Friday, June 11th Annual Block Party conducted on Central Road. We really had a nice time, obviously a little bit different seeing people without masks walking around throughout Central Road. We did learn some other items from that event, and then next year's event obviously will even be better. We do want to really thank Willow Creek Church for being the main sponsor for the Friday, June 11th Food Pantry Bike Safety and Taco Truck Event that was held at East Park Apartments. If you would like to volunteer or help Willow Creek Church, I know any of their plans or other food pantry events, I would refer you to Alderman Bud Matts, or his wife Teresa Bud Matts, to get in touch with Katie. The church does a fantastic job with the Chicago Food Pantry and making sure that this continues on. We also want to thank everybody who volunteered and participated. Alderman O'Brien was part of the Sunday, June 13th Annual Law Enforcement Torch Run. Somehow it just says Torch R, but it's Torch Run for the Special Olympics that was conducted on Gulf Road. The weather really was nice. We had a good turnout. Usually Hoffman Schaumburg has about 10 to 20 different runners. They had about six turned it over to ours, which was about 10 Rolling Meadows individuals plus Alderman O'Brien, and we had two people from Palatine PD with us, and then we turned it over to Arlington Heights, who had three runners. So again, really appreciate everybody coming out and volunteering. We do have another Special Olympics event coming that will be later in the year with Dunkin' Donuts. We do want to thank everybody who attended and participated at the Monday, June 14th Annual Flag Ceremony that was led by Scout Troop 168. And again, we do want to reiterate to people, if you have an old torn or a flag that you need retired correctly, please bring it to City Hall, and we do make sure that it will be there that night. We do want to thank everybody for the Friday, June 18th, first scheduled Friday Rock and Roll in the Meadows. The next one is scheduled for Friday, July 9th. The band this time will be Hot Rocks, which is a Rolling Stone trivia band, and is scheduled to play for that night. Event starts at 7:00 PM and goes until 10:00 PM in Kimball Hill Park. We'll have some additional signage next time regarding some smoking and non-smoking, I should say, but also some other ideas that came up and we need to make sure that we have. We do want to mention that this Thursday, there will be a blood drive scheduled with Vitalant, and again, it is Thursday, June 24th, from 1:00 to 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. Due to need still for social distancing, appointments are really needed for this event. Please contact Vitalant at 877-258-4825. And again, future blood drives are scheduled for August 26th, October 28th, and December 23rd. If you missed the May 29th City Market, the next one is scheduled for June 26th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Community Church at 2720 Kirchoff Road. We do want to mention that the Meadows Cruise Nights are back thanks to Meadows Christian Fellowship located at 2401 Kirchoff Road. The cruisers will be around from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM on the following Fridays, June 25th, July 30th, August 27th, and September 3rd. Please join this family fun at 2401 Kirchoff Road. If you need additional information, please visit the website at www.meadowscrewnights.com. It's a little bit different from what they've done in the past. It typically has been every Friday, but due to some volunteers, some scheduling, they only went to once a month. We do want to mention that the family-friendly Fourth of July Parade is scheduled for Sunday, July 4th, starting at 11:30 AM. Please go to our website for information, or if you have any floats or people who would like to attend, please fill out a form. We also want to reiterate that the city's Fourth of July fireworks will be conducted on July 4th at Salt Park, starting at around 9:15. Dusk is typically what we do it, so just think about that when it happens. We do expect a lot more people this year, obviously with some other municipalities canceling their Fourth of July. Please remember that Monday, July 5th, City Hall and Public Works will be closed in observance of the Fourth of July holiday. Refuse is delayed one day that entire week. We do want to reiterate that please shop, dine, and order in Rolling Meadows is more important than ever during these times. It is significant to remember our big boxes, restaurants, small businesses, and again, everything that we can do for local. The June E news and views can be found on the city website. Please visit wcd.org and click on the News and Views tab. Before I get to the add-on, we do mention at the end of the month, last meeting, we do have our July committee meetings. Economic Development will be meeting on a different date. They will be meeting on Monday, July 12th at 6:00 PM. Tentative items or discussion consist of new business feedback and contact distribution, continued discussion on the 2021-2022 goals, business advocate update, and other items of interest. Please note again, the committee will be having another meeting in August, but it will not be on the first Monday of the month. They will be meeting on Monday, August 9th at 6:00 PM. For the Planning and Zoning Commission, they will be meeting on Tuesday, July 6th at 7:30 PM in the council chambers. There are three tentative items for the public meeting, tentatively. A public hearing and consideration of a petition to approve a final plata of Meadow Brook Resubdivision Number 3, combining two adjacent lots into one new lot, to authorize a variation from Section 122-63, the zoning of the city code of Rolling Meadows, to reduce the number of required parking spaces from 220 to 196, and to authorize a relief pursuant to Section 18-164 Buildings and Building Regulations, to modify parking spaces, dimensions for certain parking spaces, and other relief necessary to build in compliance with the petition submitted. Jamie Klein, the agent of ATS Sortomat USA, is actually the filer for this, and they are the applicant and the property owner of this property. There will also be a discussion, and they are actually consolidating the 56-55 and 55-21 Meadow Brook Court. the applicant and the property owner of this property. There will also be a discussion, and they are actually consolidating the 56-55 and 55-21 Meadow Brook Court. The second one is a public hearing and consideration of a petition for a text amendment to Section 122-78-CBA of the Code of Ordinances for Illinois and the city of Rolling Meadows, to modify allowable sizes of detachable garages from 624 square feet to 864 square feet in all residential districts. And then the final item for that night is a continuing workshop discussion regarding text amendments that would authorize digital signs for non-residential uses in residential zoning areas. And again, they are also going to be meeting a different date from their usual in August, so advance notice that they will be meeting Wednesday, August 4th at 7:00 PM for their August meeting. The item that I do want to mention, obviously with the storms that were on Sunday night into Monday morning, part of Northwest Central's responsibility is to activate sirens when they have the best information that they have. So they do look at tracks, they do look at what's coming from the weather report, if Rolling Meadows is part of it. Our warning sirens were not activated because from the best information that they had, we were not in the track. However, Arlington Heights, Elk Grove Village, Palatine, Schaumburg were activated because when they were looking at the track, and they were actually called out specifically. So again, we do have a July committee of the whole discussion that is actually going to talk about emergency sirens. As the city council knows, we did move one of our sirens from Old Fire Station 15 into right by the community garden. But again, it's very important for people to understand that when you do hear a siren, it's important for you to look at your smartphone, get on a radio, listen to what's going on. Typically, you have a short period of time to go downstairs. You have a short period of time to really react to that. Always take it as a concern, and obviously, the sirens go off, there is not a siren at the end of it saying that everything's all clear. So we will go over a little bit more on this in July. I was always ready to go and for some continuation to understand where we have sirens, why you do hear spill over from Palatine. Northwest Central, again, does that on their responsibilities. They do let know the chiefs when we do get activated. This is completely different from the Tuesday at 10 o'clock activation, which is a good time set if you're actually trying to do your thing. But again, each of the chiefs do interact with Northwest Central, and our emergency sirens are completely different from the park district's electric lightning detectors. So we just want to have more information for people, but understand, if you have any question about why you hear a siren, it's always good to call the non-emergency number, but if you have a big concern, always go and everything else on that. There is more communication always coming from Northwest Central to the chiefs about the sirens, but again, for the city of Rolling Meadows, when Northwest Central was getting the best information, looking at the tracks, they did not activate here in the city of Rolling Meadows, but it was activated in different areas. Not all the Northwest commie area was activated. They look at the tracks specifically. So that's the last item for items of interest.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. I definitely appreciated the last item, and I look forward to having a more in-depth discussion about that, especially for residents. Moving on to the second item here, it's the May 2021 New Businesses. Manager Crumstock, do you have information to share with us on that?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Actually, we have six new businesses. One is a home occupation. We do want to mention Grandes El Toro. That is at the Sitco. That is a new Mexican sort of restaurant. Obviously, for Rob, it's a quick drive now to the Sitco and get burritos and tacos, and we've all been testing it as they go on. As Mayor mentioned before, we did do a ribbon cutting at Robin Hood Restoration at 1841 Hicks Road, and Nick will be part of the EDC. And the final one that we do want to mention is Hyper Microsystems. This is a group that the city council gave to a CB, a 6B recommendation to Cook County. They're the ones who take old computers and recycle and do some additional work, but Hyper Microsystem is in the city now and operating as a city of Rolling Meadows business.
Thank you for sharing those new businesses. This brings us to the third item on city staff reports, and it's the July 13th, 2021 City Council Draft Agenda. Manager Crumstock?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, it's a fifth Tuesday of the month, so please remember that now our next meeting is July 13th. We do have, obviously, COVID-19, the ordinance, if we need it, still in place, or if not, it would still be on there. We do have, from the Planning and Zoning Commission, the second readings that you just approved for first reading tonight, obviously for the M1 and M2 items, and then obviously, the city petition, obviously with that too. We will have a first reading of pandemic on COVID-19, if necessary, for the state of emergency, and then obviously approve an ordinance creating a recapture agreement at 2800 Brockway. This is from the last committee of the whole meeting that we had. We'll pay some bills, approve a purchase of two public works, trucks are still scheduled, approve a contract with the Rolling Meadows Professional Firefighter Association Local 3075. We will also approve a change order for roadway patching operations throughout the city, and then we'll accept a public utility at 2800 Brockway. This is also part of that committee of the whole. At this point in time, we'll have community items of interest, the May financials, traffic review committee from their June meeting, and obviously, the June Cow and the June, or July 20th Cow and the July 27th city council agendas that we have. With that, that is the July 13th meeting.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. That now wraps up the three items under the city staff reports, and we'll move to matters not on the agenda. Are there matters not on the agenda this evening? Alderman Besessi?
Yes. Haven't done a report or anything regarding the library lately, so I just wanted to let all the residents know that currently, the Rolling Meadows Library is open seven days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, 9 to 3, Tuesday and Thursday from 2:00 PM to 8:00, and then on Sunday from 1:00 to 5:00. Starting on July 5th, the library will be open Monday through Friday, 9 o'clock to 8:00 PM, and Saturday, 9 to 5:00, Sunday, 1 to 5:00. And lastly, their study areas, which were closed, have now been reopened. So I just wanted to give that little notice out to the residents and to come and support their local library. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Besessi. Any other matters not on the agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, then we will be advised here, there is a request to go into closed session. This is for union negotiation, falling under 5ILCS 120/2C2 of the Illinois Open Meeting Act. It does require a motion and a roll call vote. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Alderman Budmats.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, for the second. Is there any discussion ongoing in the closed session? All right, seeing none, we'll have the clerk call roll.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session, and so with that, I wish everyone who doesn't have to remain a wonderful evening. Thank you.[1782.53][1782.53]